So I'll highlight a handful of those. So let's talk about distribution. This is a map of the city that shows where trees are occupying available sites. So the darker green colors, over 70% of the sites in those neighborhoods have street trees. As you move further east, we see a lower stocking level. So in some neighborhoods, less than 35% of the available sites actually have trees in them. And this is a big concern, especially in East Portland where many of our lower-income communities are, our communities of color, they don't have access to those same street trees. So keep this in mind, this is an issue that we're tackling. We also need to have more diversity in the palette of trees that are growing so that we are more resilient to pests and pathogens and a climate change, changing climate. So this is a map of the Hollywood neighborhood, and just as an illustration, we put trees that are vulnerable to four key pests and pathogens in red, and those that are resistant in green. And we chose two pests and pathogens that are here, Dutch elm disease and bronze birch borer, and two that we think will be coming soon, emerald ash borer and Asian long-breed beetle. Imagine if Hollywood lost all of those vulnerable trees at the same time, that would be catastrophic for that neighborhood. And our best, the best way to deal with this is to plant a diverse palette. We have very few of our largest trees. So this wonderful big-leaf maple, a native tree here on the left, much larger than 18 inches in diameter, but when you look at 18 inches as a cut-off, only 15% of our street tree population is of that size. And trees, when they're larger, that's when they are providing most of their benefits. 42% of our street trees are small, they're less than six inches in diameter, they're newly planted, they're young, or they're small-form trees. And a little bit of maintenance for these young trees, making sure that they are mulched and watered and structurally pruned when they're young, will go a long way in keeping that investment going, ensuring that they're healthy, and getting them to those larger-sized classes. Okay, so those are a couple highlights of the info, but what are we doing with this information? So anytime you run a citizen science project, your participants are not going to let you wait until the project is over, they're not going to wait six years for us to wrap up all of the data and then make some changes. But we had enough great information early in the project to make significant changes in our management and policy. As an example, we've updated our approved tree list, we've added in those large-form, evergreen, native trees to give more diversity. We've also added planting targets for our large permit holders, so for example, Bureau of Environmental Services has been planting more large-form evergreen and natives, and we've also set targets for planting in low-income and low-canopy neighborhoods, so we've seen great improvements there. And we're trying to tackle this issue of equitable distribution. So we've contacted with Portland State University to help us develop a citywide planting strategy so that we can really get into and understand how to better serve all Portlanders and to really bring trees where they're needed without adding undue burden, especially with that financial piece because if you plant a street tree, adjacent property owners will want maintaining it. So that's how we've used data and policy. All of our data is available online, there's a map, it's open data, it's being used by research institutions, by residents, by universities, other bureaus, it's all available. One of the best parts of the project has been that our volunteers have stayed with us. And so this map in green shows you where we have active tree teams. So all of these groups that conducted the inventory, they're still coming back to work in their communities. And they're planting, they're pruning, they're talking to their neighbors, they're doing great work out there. As an example, on the lower right, this is the Alwina Neighborhood Tree Team near the Mississippi District. This is their second year removing and replacing dead-and-dying cherry trees for low-income residents. So they received a grant and they were able to replace 40 trees this year, all done by volunteers. Very proud of their work. And I mentioned the need to maintain young trees, and we are tackling this with our partners. Urban Forestry does workshops where we work with volunteers to prune young trees. We have a community tree care program in partnership with Friends of Trees and some funding from Bureau of Environmental Services. And together, we're pruning about 2,000 young trees a year, although that's a drop in the bucket when you look at, say, the 90,000 trees that are in the smaller-size classes. But we found a good place to start with the resources that we have. So in closing, I'd just like to say thank you to all of our volunteers and our communities who really did this work for us. People came out to help their community, to improve their urban forest, to meet their neighbors, to do something positive right where they live, and they've really, truly made a difference. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, I just wanted to mention that Angie started this program just starting with Wood Neighborhood, and has been able to expand it across the city, and we're very proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
About the other policy solutions for addressing the issue of affordability for low-income and fixed-income homeowners? We haven't touched on that. I just see that as a, I mean, that's obviously a driving factor behind why we don't have more trees as we move further out, and we have thousands of low-income homeowners who may not be able to afford to maintain, remove, repair their sidewalk, and then if they have to, they really don't want to replace that tree and do it all again.
It's a big issue, yes. In terms of city code, that responsibility is assigned to the adjacent property owner, and we do have limited resources to deal with that directly. And I think the folks that are going to speak next are going to address that directly. And so with, with the limited resource that we have, we're trying to work around some of that, but without the direct resource, there's not much that we can offer.
Very well said, Angie. I'll just add to that, Commissioner Newdally, we know for a fact that the adjacent property owner having to maintain the street tree is an obstacle to tree planting for understandable reasons, and I know Friends of Trees and BES and their street tree planting program have run into that. So at this point, we'll turn it over to the Urban Forestry Commission members, and we'll speak to you about the future of street trees.
Good morning. Good morning. This is Archibald, I'm the Chair of the Urban Forestry Commission. Mayor Reddick is the Chair of our Policy Committee, and Jim Laby and David Saunders will be joining us in two weeks for a presentation. First of all, for, very first of all, thank you very much, and thank you for putting resources into our urban forest. A personal note, while these folks come up here, let you know that I've been a City Planner for City Corvus since 1976. I was, I was on to the Forestry Commission in the 80s, and where we were and where we've become is an amazing journey, and we should be proud of ourselves. I just wanted to say that. I'm very proud of us. So, given said that, I've been very pleased as Chair to participate and see the Forestry Commission create a policy committee that has taken on a topic that has bedeviled us for a century, literally. Unlike Pasadena, California, which addresses this issue in 1898, we are still struggling with this issue. And that issue is what do we do about trees in the right way? I wanted to point out that both PowerPoint presentation and this two-pageer talks about problems and solutions, but all the problems on the second page are not tasks for the City Council, but actually result from the incredible knowledge that our members have as they start working through this in collaboration with Friends of Trees, the Urban Forestry Council, John Street Watership Council, Audubon, and many other organizations. So we've given this a lot of thought and realized now's the time for us to have an inter-bureau conversation, and it's the City Council that can put that into motion. Finally, I wanted to say that we always invite anyone to attend our Forestry Commission meetings, there are Thursdays, Thursday morning, I know you're very busy, but come anytime, or any issue that anyone on the Council would like the Forestry Commission to address specifically, we're more than open, working with our Commissioner, Commissioner Fritz. Thank you.
Hi there, Mayor Wheeler, City Council. My name is Jim Laby. I'm going to present a proposal today. I don't want to repeat, but we're here today, of course, because street and public right-of-way trees are a valuable public asset, and Portlanders care a lot about them. I've lived and worked in all parts of the city, and I've experienced this over my career. Trees are uniquely situated, street trees are particularly important because they're uniquely situated in the landscape along our transportation corridors to mitigate the environmental impacts, mostly from cars and driving, and also provide, they're really critical helping create the vibrant, walkable, more compact neighborhoods that are really core to our city comp plan and regional plans. And these benefits are only going to grow as our city grows more dense. This is recognized in a variety of plans, recent plans, the Climate Comp Plan, the Climate Strategy Plan, going back to the Watership Management Plan, these are, they, all these plans and more recognize the need for trees and evergreen infrastructure throughout the city, but especially along Portland's densest corridors and our dense centers. They also call for equitable distribution of trees across the city, and as Vivek is going to mention, our urban heat island impacts our most vulnerable populations along these key transport or corridors and in these tree-deficient neighborhoods. But I always like to point out that we're farthest behind in meeting our tree canopy goals in the public right-of-way, in the public right-of-way and in our industrial lands. So what is the problem? There's really two problems. You've already heard about the street tree maintenance issue and the consequences of that. In addition to the equity issues that that raises, it also, there's backlog of trees in poor condition, and this tree damage is a public safety issue. It also increases the damage during storm events like we recently had, and that's a burden both to residents but also to bureaus, there's an extra cost, particularly PBOT, in terms of dealing with storm impacts. And there are other issues, we can't use capital funds for street trees if we're not maintaining them in most cases. The other big problem is we don't, we're needlessly losing large healthy trees and street tree planning sites in the process of making street improvements and in development situations, and there's a lot of case studies here, so I wish I could go into them here today. But basically, it comes down to the fact that there's a lot of competition for space in the public right-of-way, and trees are really at the end of the line in consideration. And that's not just because there's bad people in the city that don't like trees, it's because we have outdated policies, procedures, and record requirements that really force the unnecessary removal of trees and removal of tree planning spaces. So looking at this issue and updating our codes and policies is really critical, and this also is an equity issue. Where you see some innovative things happening with street trees, like, and they're out there, it's in neighborhoods where the neighbors are loud and vocal, and they compel the city to do these innovative things. In the parts of the city, like East Portland, where you don't have that capacity, that's where you really, you really see trees taking a hit, and we're losing to a lot of these large, healthy trees. So there's an equity issue on this side of the problem. So why now? Why address street trees now? Really, three main reasons. First of all, we've just made this huge investment in inventory, this asset that we're not maintaining, the street trees. We have countless numbers of people involved out in their community thinking about this. Now is a good time for a big look at street trees and addressing some of these problems. Over the last years, we've also started making investments in street trees, planting street trees, ever since the Watership Planning, and made some progress. But if we don't maintain these street, these young trees, they're not going to grow into large, healthy trees, especially in our under-treat neighborhoods, and we're going to have more of the costs that we mentioned earlier. You know, there is one city in Friends of Tree pruning workshops, a volunteer street tree maintenance team, but it's not going to cut the mustard when you talk about over 200,000 street trees across the city. The other thing is just looking at street trees and public right-of-trees right now is really timely, given a number of ongoing current planning efforts, including citywide street tree strategy that PSU and Urban Forestry are working on, the Urban Forestry Plan Update, future Title XI code updates, we know there's more to do related to reforming Title XI and updating it. But there's also a lot of, as we update the zoning code and the comp plan, there's a lot of problems that are outside Title XI that impact trees, a lot of barriers to preserving and planting street trees, as I mentioned. PBOT has a number of projects that they're working on right now which align nicely with this, the Living Streets Program, the update of the city's Right-of-Way Management Manual, and any of these community efforts like the J District Green Project on the community level that are focused on street trees. Lastly, the third most important reason why now is, an investment in street trees is really investment in local jobs and green development, and I know that's a high priority right now in this city. We have a real chance to build on existing programs. We already have this really cool program with City where they employ low-income people to plant and establish street trees in low-income neighborhoods. This, a street tree maintenance program, a targeted street tree maintenance program could build on a program like that and expand it to deal with maintenance issues. I'm going to skip ahead here and just say, so the Ask Archibald proposal, the gist of it is really to convene a collaborative process, the whole community needs to be, a task force, intertask force with community stakeholders, to assess the problems of maintaining disturbing street trees, investigating public rights to begin, the city taking a role, more active role in that, and addressing the, and updating the code process as related to right-of-way improvements and development to better integrate the street trees into our, across street skates. We know this is going to need key bureaus involved and stakeholders, it's going to need some facilitation and technical services to, for example, look at what other cities are doing, what are the financing options for street tree maintenance, what are the co-chains that happen to, to, to a street tree maintenance program? And we're not going to do this all at once, I think we're, we're going to have a targeted street tree maintenance program next year, but we can begin to start developing one in a targeted way. So I think the first step, our ask today is really that the City Council can be a work session, maybe, maybe this summer after the bureaus will resign, after the budget process is farther along, they can look at this issue, we need, we need to, your piece of act, of your staff to be involved and in bureaus. And our hope is that if we have a work session this summer, we can delve into these issues and hopefully initiate a project in September. And that under Asper, Vivek, to close out.
Just, can I interrupt for a second? I might feel pleased that we asked for 30 minutes for this presentation, we're now over. This proposal and request for a work session came out of the Urban Forestry Commission and our community partners, so I appreciate the fact they guarantee we can do a sound statement or a presentation.
Okay, very briefly, I understand we're over. My name is Peter Johnson, I'm a professor of the Sex and Planting at Portland State University. Mayor Wheeler, the State Commissioners, just a few quick questions. One is that we are very lucky, our lab is conducting research on trees in Portland, machines that fly up in the air, taking pictures of the ground, as well as now this robust street tree authority that we have, and we're bringing those two things together to really come up to the story that we are quite lucky that there were a number of the full city staff leaders, as well as community members, that planted trees early on, decades ago, and we're now re-giving the benefits of it. We've seen, in fact, as Jim was bringing up, a number of reductions in urban heat, we've seen upwards of 13 degrees of reduction in urban heat from one neighborhood to another, in some cases especially in low-income neighborhoods, that could be, that could be a matter of life and death, as we've seen in Chicago, Missouri, France, all over the planet, and with the changing, with changing temperatures across the globe, we're going to see these impacts most acute in cities. Second, we're also just learning about a number of these feedbacks that we would have not necessarily foreseen even just one decade ago. For example, we have just found out the relationship between urban heat, tree canopy, and the amount of money individuals pay for their energy bills. We've been able to document that trees are one of the single most important factors in the built environment in terms of the amount of money people are contributing to their energy costs, particularly during summer when a lot of air conditioning is used and as a minor forms, we're going to be seeing those impacts on people's health. And last, I just want to quickly reiterate that this inter-bureau task force proposal from my interview, and again, being outside of the city, has been illuminating for me in part because I've got to understand how different bureaus work, and much like our disciplines in the university, which I have been vehemently trying to get up, speaking together across disciplines, I'm eager to see an inter-bureau communication process play out. I think it'll do three things, I think, first off, it'll improve collaboration across bureaus, second, I think it'll improve communication across the complexities of how we actually implement Title XI, which I've recently had to understand in a lot more detail, and I think it'll also just fundamentally make it a much more livable place, especially in these times of climate crisis. Thank you for your time.
Excellent presentation. Welcome, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, we have eight people signed up. The first three, please come on up, are Doug Plotz, Barbara Wharton, and Brian Symes.
So, I hate to do this, I don't like shortening public testimony, but we're doing it, we are way off the schedule, we have three timed circuits today, could I ask everybody to try and hop their testimony in two minutes each? Thank you, sir.
So he's going to do two minutes instead of three.
I'm Doug Plotz, I work all around the effort of urban pedestrians and the urban environment. I support the street trees asset management strategy, trees in the right-of-way, as Jim Laby noted, are increasingly an important place to plant trees, especially with the idea of increasing density and then lot coverage will be getting on the centers, centers and corridors, as well as downtown and Pearl District. And we need that growth, we need the housing, the office quarters where you can ride transit and not be living with your auto ride. So we need trees there, and we need them in the right-of-way, need better coordination among many uses of the right-of-way, electrical poles, water meters, there are a lot of buildings slowly running down in the Pearl District and in downtown, where you have a hundred-foot one inch here, a hundred-foot there, one tree where the, for 10 trees there, especially this wall, and for that wall, there's all these specs for how, are made to look at all those specs, see if some of those can be changed, can we have, you know, shorter street lights, so they don't have to keep the trees so far away from them, you know, to get a slight shot under, under the trees, especially need to, we need map intersections to be, that's where the heat islands really are, and all these obstacles, trees that actually shape an intersection. In concert with traffic engineers, in concert with or against the traffic engineers for the last 25 years, but yes, traffic engineers are critical in this, in fact. I also wanted to note that the city is right now planting trees in those underserved areas in East Portland, which are also underserved as far as having those sidewalks or other pedestrian facilities. And some of the trees are going in right where the sidewalk would be, and the city has acknowledged that, well, yes, the trees would have to come out if there are sidewalks to go in, and that doesn't seem like the right way to do it. We need to determine where the trees should go that will not interfere with the future sidewalk. But I think these trees are a very important aspect of the city that we need to, we need to make sure that we're getting as many and as far as we can.
Thanks, appreciate it. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Barbara Wharton, I'm a resident of Concordia neighborhood, I've been a volunteer with Urban Forestry as a street tree steward in the past eight years, and I'm also a member of the Concordia tree team, which was the first neighborhood that embarked on the inventory for street trees. I've seen in the past eight years so many improvements as relates to urban forestry here in Portland, but I continue to see so many opportunities that we haven't had seized. I walk through my neighborhood, and just as a resident, there's a lot of development in Concordia, and I see houses coming down, houses going up, and at the very point where street trees can be, are planted, I see the wrong tree being planted. So we're not seizing that opportunity for future. So I think that as far as homeowners for street tree planting developments are actually for those important homeowner in the city, and we haven't connected with them successfully yet. The other thing I see is, with the data from the street tree inventory, is those underserved neighborhoods that need trees as well, and now we have this data, and it seems like the most perfect time to start addressing and letting that data direct future efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Good morning.
I'm Brian Symes, and I'm a retired architect from the Housing Authority of Portland, and I am the first kid for the front of the trees. In 1989, I was at 7:30 in the morning in the basement of the building. I was a witness of Richard Symon asking Bob Nadeau for $5,000 to start the front of the trees, and that is the earthquake that created this Tommy that we have seen here today. Good volunteers are the best thing in this city, and when they get involved with the front of trees and making our city better, it's like buying a five-penny acorn and ending up with a $10,000 worth of tree. So I encourage the City Council to, you know, go on with this inventory, create, involve citizens in their trees, and as an architect that builds life for hundreds of communities in the city, and I have time, that knows the tree code, that knows their trees on the property, it makes my job and all the BES people down there at Southwest 1900, it makes their job so much easier, all the zoning people that I see, all PBOT people, all the BES people that I see, a three-time life plaistor, it makes a wonderful city that everybody knows what the word "trees" are, and you guys are responsible for that. Thank you. That's, that's a great story.
Our Daniel Newberry, Elizabeth Fieldbrand, and Scott.
And thank you for the opportunity to speak for you. I'm a member of the Urban Forestry Commission and Executive Director of John Street Watership Council, and I'm very proud to be a part of the street tree authority task. I think everybody's kind of on board with knowing what the benefits of trees are, especially the health benefits. But, you know, the trees are really what make, in a lot of ways, what makes Portland to Portland, makes it livable, and we've got a lot of development pressure coming up, and it seems to me as if, whenever there's any new kind of development that involves the right-of-way, street trees are often the first casualty. I think it's important to point out, although I think it's obvious to everybody, that when a large street tree comes down, it really takes decades for a new tree to come up and grow in its place and really reap those benefits. So I think it's really important that this proposal that we're putting forward today, to have all the city departments coordinate, I think it's really important because we need to really prevent those big street trees from coming down, if there's a way to do that. And I think that getting the departments together is, is the way to do it. You know, the city bureaus are really good at completing their missions, but so many times, you know, in any big bureaucracy, everybody gets kind of silent in a lot of ways, street trees end up being the sort of casualty that fall between the grass. Earlier today, Commissioner Newdally, you had asked about the whole equity issue with street trees, and I think just based on some research I've done, that there are some good examples in other large cities around the country. This, you know, we're not the first city to have to deal with issues of equity when it comes to paying for street tree maintenance. You know, there are some other cities, Washington DC and San Francisco, some really good examples of how this has been dealt with.
I guess that's all I can say. Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Mayor, and City Councilman, this Scott Fodder, I'm Executive Director of Friends of Trees, and I just want to first say acknowledge, quote, Parks and Recreation and the Urban Forestry Team for joining this inventory, and for Bureau of Environmental Services for investing in our urban forest, this is a great asset to the city. And Friends of Trees, we, to address Commissioner Newdally, we take pride in the fact that we are trying to increase the urban canopy in marginalized neighborhoods. We have our Green Eastside program, which is specifically focused on Eastside Portland for the majority of our tree planting events. And I can only say that we are thrilled that there is, hopefully, going to be an inter-bureau team that, where we can, we can come together with stakeholders and really address the issue of maintenance of our trees over the long term. Daniel mentioned other cities outside of the state, but other cities within the state, notably Eugene, for example, are responsible, the city is responsible for trees, from planting to, to maintenance events, when we have big issues like this winter, when you have big trees coming down and causing park.
trees coming down and causing property damage and even death to humans. So we very much encourage the City Council to form this task force, and I know it's not going to happen overnight, it's going to take a little time. We know we're at the table for that discussion because we do have a connection to the community very directly. And we really appreciate the fact that bureaus will be working with each other and organizations like ours and the Watership Council to come up with a solution to this problem, this ever-growing problem, no pun intended, of trees that need maintenance summertime. So thank you very much for your time and for consideration of this task force. Thank you very much.
Hi, good morning, Mr. Ray, I'm the Commissioner. My name is Elizabeth Fieldbrand. I'm a resident in Burd East Portland, and I am a member of the Concordia Tree Team, as well as a graduate from the 2012 tree story program. And when I first heard of this task force, the first thing that came into my mind was a character from a Dr. Seuss story, and I'm not sure exactly who it was, but was, who speaks of the trees?
Alora.
Alora.
Yes, Alora.
And I thought, okay, well, maybe this needs to start kicking in now. I grew up in Detroit, and I watched the urban canopy that destroyed by the pandemic disease. It went from being a beautiful, meaty city to almost a destination of turkeys today because of lack of planning. So right now, Portland, there's so much growth that's happening, and apartments are going up, trees are going down, that it is the perfect time for people to focus on the trees in the city. And fortunately, hopefully, can find the energy that we need to keep moving forward with this tree that we have.
Thank you.
And the last two signed up are Mayor-